Couldn't.
They was eating people.
But there was no way you could.
They were eating people.
We had to break the cycle.
Yes.
And we finally broke it. And you know what? Say what you need to say, be respectful, I don't care. But be respectful, but nothing's gonna happen.
We still got a hangover.
The way that.
That's gonna be a while, get rid of it.
But you know what? That hangover is coming to an end.
Oh yeah.
It already has.
I mean, the city's grown.
Oh, it is. It is.
Only thing is, we can help it alone.
Man, it was amazing like how you saw it that early. And I saw it, Cameron saw it, and then Sean saw it.
Outside is looking in.
Yeah.
That's all it was. And having the gonads to speak up.
Yeah, and and take it. Yeah, and take it, and you did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well.
Oh, she's. She.
I know, I know, let's, these are on.
Stone cold.
Yeah.
She says, do you wanna wind up in jail? You know?
Yeah.
You know, Mama Cass and her triple sisters.
You ready, okay?
I'll teach you how to do that.
What, did I not do it correctly?
Three reps.
I got their attention, they did the job. Alright, I'm trying to, I'm getting schooled on how to rap upon the gavel according to Mr. Money, so I apologize. Give me a moment. Uh, thank you everybody for attending the regular meeting that Buchanan City Commission Monday, December ninth, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M. Uh, we have no recognition, so at this time, uh, everybody join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Whedon?
Yes.
Biansky?
Yes.
Money?
Present.
Swann?
Here.
And George?
Here.
You have a quorum.
And we'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I also move.
Do we have a second?
This is Money House reporter.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion approved. Uh, at this time, we will take public comment on agenda items only. Please keep your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record at the podium. Okay, C N O. You're good. Okay, we'll save it to the end, right? Okay, thank you. Uh, C N O public approaching the podium. Uh, it will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent.
Thank you, do we have support?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, all appro, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, roll call, please.
We're doing roll call on that?
Uh. I think it was all, I think you had all eyes.
Okay.
You did all eyes.
We're good.
Yeah.
You're good.
Alright. Alright. Schedule matters from the floor. Uh, audit presentation, Brian Hack, C P A from Krugel Lawton will present the two thousand three, two thousand four fiscal year audit.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hmm?
Stay close. Alright, so, yes, uh, Brian Hack with Krugel Lawton, so to discuss the audit, the financial statement audit of the city, this is for the fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand twenty-four. I'll give a quick overview of kind of our process, how things went, conclusions, and happy to take questions at the end, I'll just be fairly brief. Um, but yeah, so first of all, thanks, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to provide this service to the city as always. And, uh, I I usually try to thank those we work with, I'm gonna especially do that this year. Uh, really, really appreciate, uh, Tim, Deb, Courtney, and the whole team. They did just a fantastic job, um, improving processes, giving us the things we need. So, uh, it was, it was a perfectly fine audit last year, and it was really improved over that this year, so. Again, thanks to them, and, uh, yeah, so I'll jump into some of the details from this year. So, our job as the auditors, so again, financial statement audit, we're here to do our testing and make sure the statements are fairly presented. And we have gotten through that, and that is our conclusion. So, the only thing that comes from us in this report that you have is the independent auditor's report. And as has been the case for the years we've done the audit, we're issuing an unmodified opinion, that's the highest level we can give. Again, just meaning we've gotten through our procedures and the statements are fairly presented. So, the overall presentation of the statements is similar to what you've seen in past years. I'm not gonna go through all these details, but encourage everyone to read, uh, again, especially our report at the very, very first, uh, three pages, and then management's discussion and analysis. Uh, among any other things that you might particularly be interested in, but I think, Tim, if if you wanted to add anything to the the M D and A kinda portion, that's, that's for you guys.
Sure. Uh, I just have a few things, uh, the the financials look very good this year. Uh, I did wanna point out a few items of accomplishments. Our, on page three, our investment earnings totaled five hundred seventy-three thousand eighty-seven dollars, a significant increase of four hundred forty thousand one ninety from the prior year's interest earnings of a hundred and thirty-two thousand eight ninety-seven. So, we significantly increased our investment earnings. Uh, and for the second year in a row, our general government expenses decreased this year by forty-five point four percent, contributing to a significant increase in the general fund, uh, total fund balance. On page four of the management discussion and analysis, you'll see up in the top portion of that, our investment earnings are highlighted up there, itemized. And then if you go to page six, my last statement. Uh, middle of the page, our, the city hall management and finance personnel have invested significant time and effort to enhance this and strengthen the business procedures and reporting functions in such areas as cash handling, investments, segregation of duties, and bank reconciliation tasks. These endeavors, along with other municipal monetary practices, should be evident in this current year's financial reports and such documents in the years to come. So, we really made a really hard effort, conscientious effort to, uh, make sure we are segregating our duties, got the bank reconciliations in line, and we did really good on our investments as well. So, take it away from there, Brian.
Sure, yeah.
Took all the good stuff for you to.
Right. Uh, that, that's pretty much all for me, no. So, so, yeah, that, that's more detail, um, about the same, the same thing. So, that's, that's showing you kind of some dollars behind what we saw from an audit perspective. Um, so basically, yes, I agree, that's, uh, that's all good. There might be some overlap, we didn't coordinate all of our comments here, so forgive me for that, but, uh, just a couple of the financial pieces that I was gonna, gonna highlight. So, and they're in the M D and A as well, so I'm not saying anything that you wouldn't see there, but big picture, so government wide, and that's all the funds that the city has. They're split into the governmental activities and then business type activities. The governmental activities increased by about seven hundred ninety thousand, uh, ending with a net position of about nine point eight million. The business type activities, that's the water sewer fund, uh, had an increase of six hundred thirteen thousand, ending at net position of eight point one million. So, again, increases is kind of the, the bottom line for those two, uh, categories. Big projects going on, so largest as of June thirty, which was the end of kind of our scope, was the new D P W building. See that in the financial statements as well. And just to kind of, uh, say again the same thing, but maybe in a different way, about the financial health and operations for the year. So, the general fund fund balance, we talk about months of fund balance based on current year operating expenditures. So, that number is four point two five months last year as of June thirty, twenty-three. As of this year, it's eight point two three. So, pretty good increase, and again, just a result of all of the ins and outs and the expenditures for the year. So, that's pretty much it for me, we're gonna be submitting this all by the end of the year, this, that's the deadline to the state. And yeah, happy to take any questions now, or, uh, we're available all year, uh, if you, if anyone needs anything from us.
How many years have you done the city of Buchanan's audit now?
So, I've been involved for three years, maybe two and a half years. Uh, and I think we've done it for four years in total, don't hold me to that, but if my memory is right, that's what it's been.
Yeah, I think we brought, we brought them on as a, as an ability to add transparency to our audits, because we consistently use the same audit company, and I think that the push from the community was to add some.
Yeah, we had Plant Mariana, they got so heavy in our books.
Mm-hmm. Did it lose conflict of interest at that point?
Yep, so we brought on Krugel.
But didn't we hire Tim temporarily and he got a role on this?
That's right.
Cause I know it was a nightmare.
Yeah, absolutely.
The general public doesn't understand what kinda nightmare this was.
Yeah.
I had several CPAs look at it when I was commissioner before, and they couldn't read it.
Yeah.
So, for us to be here with the presentation.
You can print that.
They, they do a great job.
She said, you can print that.
That's.
She is, she's writing it down, she's got you.
That's right, and that's, that's a testament to the people who are here now.
Yes, very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Tim, and all your staff.
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, nothing else, or is there anything else?
Not yet.
Yeah, if you could just do a little bit more this time, thanks.
Couple more pats on the back.
Yeah.
Deserved.
No, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will move on to reports, departments, committees, and boards. Uh, we have a presentation by One Buchanan, uh, Stephanie Cashier Rodriguez, uh, Chair, and Ruth Ryder, Secretary, to give us an update presentation on their accomplishments.
How y'all doing tonight?
Wonderful, how are you?
Good, I'm Stephanie, thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the support. Um, basically, I'm just gonna give you guys a rundown of the One Buchanan history. Um, it's a little lengthy, but you know, I'll make it sound good.
We're ready, we're ready.
Give you a very, very general idea of our board. Um, One Buchanan was established in two thousand sixteen, um, in response to emerging needs of unity across the nation. One Buchanan was originated with the work of Reverend Doctor Sid Mon, uh, the United Church of Christ and founder of Impacto Consulting. Along with Brandy Remo, which is, which she is a graduate of Buchanan Community Schools and a social worker with Andrews University. One Buchanan's mission is to promote awareness of our rich diversity through education, activities, and programs that strengthen an inclusive community. We envision that One Buchanan as a catalyst to create an inclusive community, which values and celebrates our diversity so that together we can strive and thrive. The organization values our rich diversity and believes in community which provides equitable resources and opportunities. One Buchanan believes that through listening with empathy, we are able to connect and understand our diverse perspectives. We promote a sense of belonging through acknowledging and celebrating our differences. We currently have a diverse board of directors of about eleven, who meet monthly to organize educational forums and events on the first Wednesday of each month, of course. In two thousand eighteen, um, and that was established in two thousand eighteen, with the encouragement of Buchanan City Management in January, two thousand twenty-one. One Buchanan partnered with the City of Buchanan, thus we became a city board under the city umbrella of nonprofit status. Shortly thereafter, the city included our organization in the city's master plan. That two thousand twenty-one master plan restated the city ordinance of two thousand nineteen, commitment to diversity with non-discrimination and equal protection for all. The One Buchanan vision helps to ensure the city slogan of life is better here. And that applies to all who choose to call Buchanan their home. Our first forum was held in early two thousand eighteen to introduce One Buchanan to the community. That was followed by educational forums focusing on Native American issues nationally and locally in the fall of that year. In two thousand nineteen, Buchanan held a third forum on Black history with presentations by members of our local Black community. Um, and two thousand twenty-one, after a year-long COVID hiatus, One Buchanan returned with two events focused on the impact of COVID nineteen on and mental health. In two thousand twenty-two, we held forums on both ageism and disabilities. And this was followed in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four with a focus on cultural competency, uh, with our expert facilitator Danny Sledge. There has been three of thus far, thus far forums. Um, this format will continue with some of our Buchanan students participating in the second forum specifically designed for teens, um, by our facilitator Danny Sledge. Um, and that's gonna be held on March twenty-first of two thousand twenty-five with the cultural competency. Uh, most recently in April, two thousand twenty-four, One Buchanan held a forum, uh, for the L G B T Q plus rights, uh, and their victories within the state of Michigan. And then on March eighth, two thousand twenty-five, um, One Buchanan will present a forum on the role of women across various segments within our community. In addition to our forums, One Buchanan collaborates with the Buchanan District Library to involve our community in One Book, One Buchanan. Um, I won't go into all of the books that we've represented over the years, um, but that's something that we're very proud of as well. Um, I'll go on to say that we eagerly look forward to selecting the next book, uh, for August of two thousand twenty-five through One Book, One Buchanan, with collaboration with our Buchanan City Library as well. Um, I also would like to just say that some of the people that sponsored us, um, and support us, um, goes back to the spring of two thousand twenty-three, uh, with the generosity, generosity of the Lemay family. As a memorial for Joseph and Shirley Lemay, they awarded us the first scholarship, uh, to present to Buchanan High School students. This tradition continues with One Buchanan seeking funds to award a scholarship to students who demonstrate their involvement in creating a community of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we look forward to presenting another scholarship for this year's honors convocation as well. One Buchanan remains committed to involvement with our forums, book discussions, community activities, and celebrations such as the traditional Buchanan Memorial Day and National Night Out. And One Buchanan appreciates the support of the City of Buchanan. And we aspire to have more members of our community to support us and engage with us, and also contribute to our vision and mission. We welcome all who believe that life is better here, because we stand in solidarity and are unified in the belief that we are One Buchanan. Any questions or anything you guys would like to ask about One Buchanan?
Nope, nope, we were just curious on, uh, it's been a while and we hadn't heard from you, and wanted to know what you had going on and where you were going.
Okay, I hope I answered everything, you have any questions on anything that we got going on coming up?
Nothing specific.
I would love to see any of y'all at our board meetings, first Wednesday of the month, and we now have them at the Michigan Gateway Facility downtown next to Milano's.
Mm-hmm.
You all are always welcome, and any involvement, we're always looking for more volunteers, people that support, wanna contribute towards our scholarships. And we would love to collaborate with any, um, businesses or people within the community, so that way we can stand by, we are One Buchanan, and know that we're here for one another.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yo, you did great.
Agreed, agreed.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, uh, we'll move on to the common committee update and current schedule. Mr. Michael Rowland.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me tonight, I really appreciate the time. Um, I won't be going through this line item by line item, so I'll, I'll save you the hour that it'll take to go through that. Uh, but I did wanna talk to you today, um, about not only what we're referring to as the Common Collective, uh, but also my role in the concert series as well as we do, um, every year at the, right before the series starts. Um, so I put together a packet for you, um, there's some takeaways for tonight, um, but also, and more so, maybe more takeaways for the January meetings and into the future from there. Uh, but I wanted to introduce you, uh, what we're, again, calling the Common Collective. As you can see in the index, um, we talk about a library of things, but I thought the purpose that we have in here is a kind of a concise way to talk about where we're at with things. The Buchanan Common corresponding resources have become the cornerstone for downtown vitality. This group includes the Summer Concert Series, Tin Shop Theater, Buchanan Farmers Market, and Historical Pierce Mill. All of these organizations have grown and prospered throughout the years, albeit independently of each other. These have all been considered committees by the City of Buchanan, which has made reporting and communication difficult. Resources haven't been shared, nor have there been considerable collaboration between all the organizations, and the purpose of the Common Collective is to change that. We will be a committee made up of nine members comprised of the different organizations and community leaders. This will be an official city board that meets monthly, provides meeting minutes to the city, and works with all of the common-related activities to ensure transparency, equity, and deliver the best outcomes for Buchanan residents and taxpayers. The goal of this organization will also be to continue to have these organizations work together to identify redundancy and efficiencies in the combined work of the common. We will work together to create economies of scale with marketing, promotion, and fundraising as well. We'd like the, the City of Buchanan to consider adopting, at some point, the enclosed bylaws and work with us to create a new philosophy for the great resources that Buchanan Common provides. Um, again, I won't go through all the bylaws, um, this, these are draft, um, for you to review on your own. Um, we're happy to add or subtract anything that you think is necessary in here. I wanna, um, take time to thank Carla for, um, all her help, uh, throughout this process as well. And, um, again, these are a draft that kind of just go over, um, you know, what we, what we're looking to do as comp, as a composition of the board. Um, I won't go through the history of, of all of the organizations, uh, but I did outline, um, just so everybody can be up to speed on how all the organizations got to where they are. Um, frankly, all of the organizations are, are storied and have a lot of history behind them, and a lot of great people that have done a lot of work over the years. So, I wanted to make sure to in, insert all that in there too, so you understood kind of the context of where everyone was at. I did wanna spend, um, a little time, though, on, um, each individual budget. So, for the concert series, uh, the concert series has matured quite differently over the years. Um, it has grown from a small organization that, uh, started with Thursday shows, which we still do, that do a great job of, of showcasing local talent. Uh, being able to provide, uh, those local, um, field shows at a much more, um, budget-friendly environment for the community. Uh, and that's something we've done really since the beginning of the Common, nineteen ninety-six. Later, um, we, through some donors and some of the, um, people that were on that committee, decided they wanted to find some donors, advance that work to have, uh, wider range of shows, uh, from regional and national acts. We've had major acts like Keller Williams, Midnight North, a variety of, uh, national acts that usually would be, uh, set aside for much bigger venues. Um, that is all actually in relation to the, the, the great donors that we have, and many of them are still here, uh, working with us on a year-to-year basis. Um, one of the things that came up, um, probably around the, well, that's frankly when the D D A was ended, uh, was that those donors didn't have a place to put those dollars. They were concerned about where the dollars would go on a go-forward basis, uh, they had set aside a lot of dollars, um, that were supposed to kinda continue. And so, the idea of endowment came up, I mean, that was where the community foundation that I also wear a hat for, uh, helped that donor, uh, create an endowment specifically for music, uh, in, right here in downtown Buchanan. The endowment, over the last, uh, four years, uh, we've been taking any dollars that we get from additional fundraising and not spending throughout the year. Um, usually, it's about anywhere from nothing to, to a couple thousand, and we've been putting that away in this endowment, um, which allows us, we only spend the earnings of this fund. And the idea of this is that down the road, it grows large enough that we have this self-sustaining budget every year, um, that's not taxpayer dollars, that allows us to be able to kinda grow the series. Um, that was, come to find out, a really prudent decision for us to make, because last year, we had one of the biggest wins, um, for really any of the common-related activities, when we were contacted by, um, the Dale Beckwith family. Um, John was a graduate of Buchanan and someone that, uh, music was deep in his heart. And he became very successful, and, and when he passed away, um, he hadn't been in Buchanan in many years, but he appreciated everything that, um, Buchanan given to him. So, his wife, uh, left us a pledge, uh, last year, she gave us thirty-eight thousand, and their minimum distribution over the next, uh, next four years of anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. So, that's money that is gonna last forever. We'll never spend that money, we'll use the earnings of that fund to create everlasting dollars, um, for the community to keep live music, um, right here in town. It's really became, uh, important piece of our community at this point, and we're really proud of the work we do. Um, as you can see, I, I put together, or we put together a, a three-year budget, um, that outlines really how all the expenses and income come in. Um, but historically, since two, since two thousand fourteen, um, we've had a ten thousand dollar, um, contribution from the city. And that is something that we would like to continue this year, um, that pays usually for all of our Thursday shows. Um, it is a tight budget for us, um, I can tell you now, as a musician myself, um, that covers, that's, average price is about seven hundred dollars, and that's the, the cap that we put on each show. Um, for a band to actually provide their own sound and do a show of the size of the Common, the going rate for that's probably closer to a thousand. Um, so we do a really good job of finding interesting act, pulling favors, and, um, doing interesting shows, like one of the ones I love is the, um, starting off the season with the Buchanan, um, High School Band. Um, that's one that doesn't cost us anything, it helps us with our budget, and showcases the amazing talent we have right here in our school system. Um, as you can see, uh, maybe more than, a lot of organizations are fundraising and grants are, are robust, um, we typically put aside at least twenty thousand. Um, and those are grants from local businesses, from individuals, um, you know, even organizations and foundations across the, across the region as well. Um, our major costs are, are band fees, sound tech, and hospitality. Hospitality is when we have a band that needs to stay at a hotel, or they need to have food or dinner, or things like that. And then marketing, of course, um, is always a part of everything we do. Addition to our budget, uh, we would like to, the City of Buchanan to consider investment and make it, at some point, in basic sound equipment for the Common. Uh, we feel this is something that would help lower our costs for Thursday shows, where typically, um, we do not provide the sound for it. Uh, but more so, would also provide opportunity for organizations like the Tin Shop Theater, who right now cannot afford in their budget to have pay-for-sound, um, for, for their shows on the Common, which is why you haven't seen any in many years. We're working very hard this year to try to figure out a way to get one on there, though. Uh, in addition to that, the city could benefit in that in many ways. Um, community events like the holiday events, nine eleven remembrance, Faith and Family Day, those are all opportunities for us to, um, use that sound equipment to get these organizations and events at the, at the Common at a reasonable rate. Uh, furthermore, uh, there is a hole in the roof of the Common. Um, that's something that we, uh, would like to get repaired, um, we've talked about it for a while, and, um, it was something that in our annual cleanup, we recognized, uh, last year. That's something that's gonna continue to get, get bigger and, and cause problems. Um, obviously, we don't have, um, a ton of technology in the building itself, but there are electrical panels, there are a variety of things that, um, that, that could end up leading to additional damage to the Common. Uh, the Tin Shop Theater, I also wanted, the other organizations asked us to, uh, present their budgets for you as well. Um, as you can see, the Tin Shop Theater, which is the Buchanan Fine Arts Council, um, has, uh, total expenses of about eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. And their request, uh, which is historic to what they've normally asked for, is eight thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Um, and their budget is typically something they come to you piece by piece, where the Common, um, we actually get that upfront and hold it in the, in the funds at Michigan Gateway. Um, so this is one, them, like the Farmers Market, will come to you with, um, no different than they normally would, um, when those expenses arise. For the Farmers Market, um, they've been doing a wonderful job too, as we all know, uh, bringing thousands of people into our, into our little town every Saturday. And, uh, all of their expenses are outlined there as well, with a total, uh, request of nine thousand seven hundred and forty, which is in line with their historical ask of the city. Again, that's one where you, uh, throughout the course of the summer, um, that, that gets out actually on the approval, um, as it, as it accrues. And then finally, uh, the Pierce Mill, uh, Buchanan Preservation Society is a, is an interesting partner for us in the Common Collective. Um, they are a separate five oh one C three, so, um, I think that's testament of the work we're doing in, in the Common Collective, is that, uh, they don't have to be there. Uh, they, they run on their own, and they're a five oh one C three. Where their connection is, is the city-owned asset of Pierce Mill, and why they wanna, um, work with us to gain some of the efficiencies we have. Um, in their, in their budget, because they're not like the other organizations where they request a line item budget from you, um, they are really talking more about a narrative. And a lot of the things that they're speaking about is the delayed, um, deferred maintenance of the, of Pierce Mill, which is really the cornerstone of preservation in our community. Um, there's a, a variety of things that probably need to get updated on there with paint and, um, general repairs. Uh, I do know, um, one of the things they note in here, that, um, there are a lot of items that they've taken care of over the years, one of which this summer is coming up, is the water wheel getting replaced. That is not in their budget narrative for the city, that's something they're working very hard with. Um, I know that those conversations with my foundation, as well as other organizations, are already in, in, in happening, and something that, uh, shows the value of the Preservation Society, where they come in and, and can handle some of these really important projects, um, for city-owned assets. That is all of the budget items we're looking for. If you go to the Summer Concert Series page, on page five, you will see a list of dates. Every year, even before we were doing the Common Collective, the, each of these organizations would get together and we would do our Common Committee meeting. At that meeting, we would discuss all the needs of every organization, and what dates they needed, and how to collaborate with that. That has been very fruitful for us. We've been able to overcome a lot of issues that were arising through those situations. For instance, Spray Day, which is a great event. The first year we, that we were doing concerts, that happened on a night that we had five, we had five hundred to a thousand people coming for a show that night, so it created some issues. A lot of times, that would be something that would cause public distrust, it would cause infighting. Instead, our relationships with the, with each other's organizations allowed us to do that behind the scenes and figure out ways that not only has helped advance the library's ability to do that Spray Day and keep making it bigger and better, but also have the Concert Series not interfere with any of that as well. So that is something that we come every year with dates that are there. As you can see, we're, we're proposing about eighteen shows. There's a lot more dates there than eighteen shows. We do ask for the flexibility to have those dates, to schedule them, because not every band can come where there is. There's a lot of curation that happens behind the scenes to make it happen. At the end of it, what we typically do is, is get back with Kala and Emma and their team and make sure that they have the dates we're not using, so those can go back to whatever organizations they have. But things like the Pride Event, other organizational events, you know, there's been talk about Faith and Family Day as well. There's a variety of really cool things that we would also like to have those dates available, so we know that we can schedule things around them. Because oftentimes, last thing we want is to put those in place and then not have any open dates for other events that might be really beneficial to the community. So what I'm requesting, again, the Common Collective discussion is kind of an ongoing discussion that we would like to have with you. We're not asking for adoption of these bylaws yet, or anything like that. I'm happy to answer any questions on it. I am requesting for the Concert Series an approval of those dates, and if possible, the, our budget for the two thousand twenty-five season.
Where's all the other representatives for all these different entities? I mean, they all got committees.
Yeah, so they, this, the, the, the collective itself is representative of every organization. If you look in the bylaws, in there, it has representation and like a chairperson from every one of those that make up this, this collective. So everybody and every organization is represented equally on it. In addition to that, we have, and we talked a long time about this, because obviously we know there's some moving pieces with everything that's going on from a community development standpoint. But we also wanted to make sure to include, you know, because right here in item A, Article Three, it talks about the board members consisting of at least seven members, Fine Arts Council, Common Committee, Preservation Society, Farmers Market Committee, Buchanan Area Recreational Board, Buchanan Area Library, Buchanan Area Chamber of Commerce, Live Buchanan or Designee of City Commission. So there's room there too, I believe, for, it sounds like we're on, on the road of a DDA. That person would also be in this committee too. You know, if the day comes where you decide that, you know, in the past, long ago, I would be having this conversation more as a heads-up to you guys, but you guys would be putting the, and Gail, my apologies, putting those funds to the DDA, and then the DDA would distribute those funds to those organizations. That's still kind of what we're, you know, in that, in that model, this works the same way. It's just, we would have to do this presentation to the DDA as well, who would have representation on this committee, too.
I'll go through this one by one. We're gonna go to Concert Series. You got eighteen of them. You want ten thousand dollars from the taxpayers. Why don't you cut back the number of concerts? Why don't you cut back on the Thursday concerts or the concerts? Get within your budget. You got, you're asking for a ten percent increase every year. I'll stop right there. But eighteen concerts, Thursday night concerts, how successful are they? You know, I know it depends on the weather, depends on the band, but maybe you ought to think about the dates. Preservation Society, they only made twenty-five hundred dollars selling pies, but they got a lot of recognition, and they did raise some money when they sold them pies. They chose not to sell pies anymore, after Alan stopped selling pies. Now, let me finish, just let me finish. And the thing about it is, is in my mind, if they're not doing something to help theirselves, I don't want to help. The Tin Shop, how long has it been enacted? And how much money do they raise? I've given them my email address and never, ever received an email from them, ever.
They just got a grant.
Huh?
They just got a grant.
Yeah.
They got a six thousand dollar grant.
Yeah. I can answer all these, actually, but I, can I?
Well, I'm not done yet.
There's a lot to answer in one question.
No, it's all pretty much the same question.
Okay.
Okay? So that's the Fine Arts. The Farmers Market. The Chamber agreed to a raise, and our infamous Heather decided that that wasn't big enough. So she gave her a bigger raise on top of it.
Right.
So, and then, for the Ticketmasters at the theater, we're paying people to collect money. You know, we don't pay nobody at the Glean Legion for everything we do.
Right.
Nothing, nobody. You're a volunteer. That's what volunteer means. So I mean, in the time that I've been down here, I'm sorry, Michael, but I don't see that much, I mean, the volunteers are great people, so I'm not slamming the people, but they don't want to venture out. And they don't want to do what they have to, to raise the money they need to raise. Because the taxpayers, the pig is, the pig is depleted. You know, even though the numbers came in good tonight, we've got a hundred million dollars in infrastructure costs, and I can't put that through hard enough.
Right.
We have to find the money from elsewhere. Whether we have to go to the marijuana people, which everybody, oh my god, oh my god, not the marijuana people, let's not deal with them, let's deal with mom and pop that's barely scratching to pay the bills, and let's go ask them for a hundred bucks every other weekend. Because we like them, and they graduated from Buchanan. Now I'm being facetious on purpose, but that seems to be the way it is. And Barb has not done anything, and this is very near and dear to me, because of the disillusion or the dissolvement of the DDA, and all of the nastiness in dissolving the DDA, and all of the bad things that happened in the DDA, but it all keeps coming out. The DDA was doing it quite a bit, and keeping a pretty close eye on a lot of this stuff. And our administrators didn't have to do this work, because we had a group of volunteers that took care of it. So I mean, that's why I asked, you know, who is in charge of the art? Who's the chairman on the arts? Is it Alice or?
Kelly Carlin.
Kelly?
Yeah, Kelly Carlin.
Yeah, I, I just don't really understand why you're here representing them, because it's not an entity yet. We haven't created that. We have not authorized that by any definition. I appreciate you coming down here and taking the heat, but you understand where I'm coming from too.
Right.
You know, and it's not an opinion, so don't say it's an opinion. It's fact. You know, and facts are, are, according to law, an opinion, but it's the truths, based on stuff I can print. So it's not really facts. It's substantiated proof of what has not been done. Sit back on your haunches, and the taxpayers will take care of you. Well, the taxpayers are tired of it.
Yeah.
Okay? So I mean, I just want, you know, cut some of the concerts, cut the cost. The same way with the concert. You don't want to clean the restrooms, you don't want to take care of that, because it's an added expense. Why should it be? You know, you got volunteers, you know, and everybody wants their handout. We're gonna talk about giving ourselves a raise. I'm not gonna fight with it too much, but I'm gonna disagree with it. I am gonna disagree with it. I'm a volunteer. I come down here because I want to. You couldn't pay me enough to come down here on purpose. No way. You know, I could not do this as a job. No way, shape, or form. But, you know, and, and Michael, I do appreciate it, but it, it bothers me, you're not an entity yet. We have not recognized you as being the head of this yet.
I agree.
Okay? And, you know, the cart got put in front of the horse, and I'm tired of that going on too.
Yeah.
I mean, it's got nothing to do with you.
Right, if I may, there's a lot of questions there, so I'm gonna try to address them. I'm, I'm probably gonna miss some, so please let me know. So I'll start with, well, maybe I should, I should start with, you know, there were a lot of valid points you brought up, and I think the Common Collective, which, you know, again, was something that was brought to us and asked to do, is a way for us to try to fix a lot of those things by bringing economies of scale into place, helping us provide different resources for each other, working better together to be a better steward of taxpayer dollars. That's kind of the essence of this.
Can you, wait a minute, let me stop you right there, okay? When it was brought to you, was it something that was discussed, or was there a motion, and was it voted on?
Yeah, we voted on it.
Did you vote on it?
Yeah.
To go to the Common, but there was a discussion against it, you know?
There was, there was a discussion of bringing them all together, and Michael and Randy arranged a meeting with all of the groups together, and so that they could get on board with each other if they were willing to do this. So it's essentially, because there are so many people, there's so many committees that work under the Common, and a lot of it was, you were hearing, this group's mad at this group, this man, group is mad at this group, we said we wanted this, and they tried to solve that with Michael's group, with the Common group, by meeting once a year, but it was still, hey, we're not utilizing this enough. If we could get one board and have all the other boards as subcommittees, then we wouldn't have to worry about Open Meetings Act, we wouldn't have to worry about minutes, we wouldn't have to be tracking it, we'd have this one board to report to for budgetary, that would report quarterly to the commission, so you guys and the public knew exactly what was going on around that use of Common.
Well, I do want to make a public comment on that. If you do try to sort that out as a commissioner, you get thrown off the committees, or you don't get put back on them. And that's pretty much the straight facts. If you really raised cane with the volunteers and say, no, this is not the way you can do it, because that's not the way it's supposed to be done, here are the rules, and regardless of how you deliver the rules, you get thrown off the committees, or you don't get put on the committees, because they don't want to deal with you, because it's politically incorrect. And excuse me for going there, Michael, but I did forget about this. And, you know, it's really near and dear to me about how this commission, this previous commission, destroyed the DDA because of personal agendas, you know?
Dan, for the minutes, it was on the June tenth meeting, we voted unanimously.
Oh, Jesus, I can't remember yesterday, thank you.
It was the June tenth meeting, we unanimously voted to have them put this.
But I think, and I, and I think your drive and determination to get these type of answers was the direct correlation to why we're in this situation today, is that he wanted to bring these answers to you, not just him as the, is, is the interim chair. I don't know that you guys have determined exactly who the chair is.
Lead volunteer.
Lead volunteer. Because of this, because of your exact questions, like, and I think you've...
Okay, so what's gonna happen when we create a DDA?
So, as I mentioned, you know, this lives no differently than in a DDA. Instead of me, obviously, I'd love to come and report to all of you as well, but ultimately, we would have to work with the DDA. You would be giving them their budget for community development, and we would work with them. That's how it used to work, when, with the concerts. And, you know, there, you know, there were, you know, pluses and minuses of that.
But I think there's some structure that's gonna be around that. Michael, forgive me if I'm wrong, I don't want to continue to go down this diatribe of the fact that the DDA is going to be the win-all catch-all for everything that has gone right or wrong within the city. Listen, we're restructuring and implementing a DDA that was dissolved for good or bad reasons, whatever have you, but let's not get into this idea that just because the DDA is coming back, that now we've got this perfect entity that is going to run everything within this scope of, of expectations that we expect. Like, they're going, they, they're gonna have things that we have to structure, obviously, based on how they were dissolved, in a, in a better manner than what they were before. So I, I don't want to continue down this path that, to, to your point, like, there was, there was issues, and, and there was great things about them. So I, I'd hate that we continue down this path of, like, the DDA is going to solve all issues, and then it, it may or may not, but what we're putting in place today is trying to put the DDA in a good position, that their availability is going to be significantly more impactful than potentially what it was before. And, and that was, I think, the, part of the reason why it was dissolved.
Well, I think, I think the Common Collective was the idea to bring all of these together, so we could get transparency, you know, because we had, we, we had groups out there, you know, and I read through some of this budget here, and, and I think, you know, yeah, I'm like Dan, I think there's some, you know, places where we could tighten it up a little bit, you know?
Right.
But, yeah, the structure of the Common Committee, I think, is, is, you've got it laid out pretty good here, and this is a good start, in my opinion.
Right.
So, yeah, I think we need to keep going forward with this, and then, like I said, when the DDA, but the DDA is not the, not gonna be the winning factor in this whole thing.
Right.
So you, you guys, you folks, what you're doing, from what I said in on your first gathering, was pretty good, and, and I like this because it's laid out, but like I said, and Dan said, you know, maybe there is some places where we can tighten up a little bit.
Yeah, and to that point, that's...
On the Concert Series, I love them. But I mean, and it's a good way to, you know, go downtown and, and meet, but...
If I can touch on the concerts real quick, because I obviously have, you know, I manage that budget and those inflow and outflows. You know, the contribution from the city on that are the Thursday shows. You know, the, the input that we get from the community is they want more Thursday shows. The rest of our donors are actually offsetting the additional cost of the Thursday shows we have now, to be able to make those happen. We haven't had an increase since two thousand fourteen in our budget for, for those from the city. If you, I think if you look at the budget of any other organization, and how it's grown from two thousand fourteen to today, ten years is a long time, and especially in this inflationatory period that we've been having, you know, when we...
Why do they want Thursday shows?
I mean, one, we've been doing it since nineteen ninety-six. And that's our opportunity to have local talent, people that are from our community, local acts. Part of the music scene in Buchanan, and really at any concert venue-type scenario where it's a community venue, is, is always a mix. You're trying to bring up your own community of artists, which we have seen. We've seen acts like the Happy Campers, Breakfast for Dinner, bands like that, that started as just, you know, small acts that came to Buchanan, and this was one of the only gigs they got. And now they're selling out big places. Happy Camper brings three thousand people a year into a big, huge Saturday show event to capstone our, our stuff. And without that access to music and access to the resources to be able to do that, a community isn't gonna have a thriving artistic environment for people to grow and prosper. And, you know, Saturday shows are a different vibe. When we have five hundred to a thousand people at a show, if you're someone that is elderly, maybe handicapped, you know, you, you, you don't have, maybe not want to come to that kind of show, you want to be able to come to a fifty, hundred-person show with a local band doing, you know, music that you know and like. We try, and we pride ourselves in the fact that we provide music of all genres, we provide music of all styles and, and areas of expertise, and that means our audience as well. So, you know, a lot of those Thursday shows, we have folks, we have a large contingent from the Senior Center that come down for a lot of those, you know, Countries and Blues shows and things like that. And, you know, again, the community is widely said, we do a lot of outreach to the community on what they're looking for, and that has been widely told to us that, you know, Thursday shows are the, are the crown jewel for, great of the, the Saturday shows bring people in from other communities, the Thursday shows are for people in our community. And obviously, both are welcome at both, but that gives us the opportunity to do that. And, you know, and again, at this point, you know, the community is saying that they want more of them. Our costs have been going up for them, and right now, the amount that we request from the city is less than what they cost. So really, the donors are paying, offsetting that in that piece as well.
So, thank you for putting all this together, and we spent a lot of time on this, so. Two, two things that I noticed in this that stick out to me. One, you know, we sat here a couple weeks ago in strategic planning and asked for more transparent, or transparency in reporting out of these boards. This organization's gonna deliver that, so we checked the box there. The other piece in here, I see a lot of asks from these other organizations. I don't look at this as a way to trim fat. These are our assets in our community, that we probably aren't aware of some of these issues, or it's not in front of our face as commissioners, and we need to be thinking about how we're reinvesting back into our assets, or capital planning for, you know, general maintenance of Piers Mill is on here. You know, roof on the Tin Shop and, and the Common. Those are just general expected maintenance items out of us, so I, I, there, there doesn't appear to be a bunch of fat in here. We're not here to approve budgets or anything unlike that tonight, other than, you know, I fully support continuing our investment in the Concert Series like we've done since nineteen ninety-six. Didn't realize it'd been that long.
Yep.
Yeah, so great work. I, I'm fully embracing what you guys are doing here. I'll review these bylaws ahead of our next meeting, and hopefully, we can formalize this.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Did this money come out of General Fund or DDA Fund? I think it's all different, isn't it? I think the DDA supported the Farmers Market. The General Fund supports the Common Concerts. Isn't that where it comes from?
So, from my understanding, and I talked a lot to the other organizations on that, So, from my understanding, and I talked a lot to the other organizations on that, because I can speak to the concerts, but, you know, I've never served on the farmer's market or, or, um, Fine Arts Council. Um, from, but the people that are on there have long histories of those, and from their understanding, they were all general fund, that, that would go to the DDA as general funding for this type of activity. And then you gave the, or not you particularly, but your commission gave, um, that duty of essentially dis- distributing that to the DDA.
If the DDA authorized it, it was probably coming out of the DDA fund, even though the general fund, it's, it's very complicated, Michael, it's very complicated. But I think the, um, farmer's market, I know we gave the Preservation Society ten thousand dollars a year, you know? And I mean, what really bothers me, and I can't get it across to the general public, I mean, I understand everybody's volunteering their time. But we really need to concentrate on raising money, because, I mean, the roofs are falling down.
Right.
And then we, we add ten thousand dollars a year to a twenty-five thousand dollar roof budget, you know? I mean, so where's it stop? I mean, if we put a roof on, are you gonna be able to comp the ten thousand dollars because we spent twenty-five to put a roof on? No, you're gonna want the twenty-five on top of the ten.
I also, though, I think, um, you also have to remember that, um, we're talking, I think there's a difference between, um, city assets and city resources. Um, these organizations, like the concerts, like Fine Arts Council, um, we don't own the common, we don't own the tin shop, we don't own, own Piers Mill. Those are your assets that, um, we're, we're essentially, if you look at it this way, um, a subcontractor that is paying, that is doing the work of keeping things going in those. Um, and what we do does cost money, um, and, you know, I think that, well, I, I totally agree, I think there's fat that could be trimmed in all situations in life. Um, I do think we have to also consider some of the wins that we have right here, you know, we talked about the endowment, um, for the concert series, that never existed. Um, you know, and even with the, with the, um, Preservation Society, you know, they, they've been contributing to their endowment, they've shifted their focus from fundraising, um, in, in small areas where, where you get, you know, maybe a couple thousand dollars over the course of a summer, um, in pies, to large donor engagement. And I can tell you from a Michigan Gateway hat that their endowment has grown significantly during that time. So, there's a lot of things that all these organizations are doing behind the scenes that might not look like peddling in the street. But, you know, for instance, the budget that we're asking from, for, from the, the commission today is less than a third of what we end up actually doing and raising. Two thousand fourteen was a hundred percent, um, so there's been a huge change that we've seen in really all these organizations, some are doing it better than others. Um, but again, that's, that's kind of part of why we want to get all of us together in a room, get, get us working together, so those things that some of us are doing well and the things that some of us are doing bad, we can address those in real time in a collaborative way that is better for the taxpayer.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think so too, thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
So we do, I think he asked us to, the, the concert series dates on here.
Yep, he asked to approve.
A motion to approve the proposed dates presented.
Do we have support?
Uh, this money has support.
What exactly is the motion for?
The concert dates.
So, I mean, we set these in stone, you're gonna have to have the ten thousand dollars. So, I mean, is there any flexibility in changing them dates?
So those dates, uh, as I mentioned earlier, are not all, there's more than eighteen dates there. Um, so those are the dates that we've worked with the other organizations that use the common as available dates that, that we could schedule with them. Um, that gives us the flexibility with the different artists and the different dates and the things that are happening to schedule in real time. To schedule all these bands, it's a, it's a herculean effort to get all these pieces together, so the more dates that we have, once we have those, you know, sixteen to eighteen dates that we do, that's when we come back and make sure that your team knows what dates now are not things that we're gonna be using that could be available for other items. Now, there may be other things, especially if this comes into play, where, uh, this common collective, where other organizations may come to us and say, well, hey, you know, we want a date for something. If we have those on our schedule, we can, as a, as a committee, you know, put that in place and get, and get that there, you know, a great, a great example of that is the Pride event. That's not, um, part of the concert series, it's not part of the work that we do with that, uh, but they work hand in hand with us to make sure the date's available and that it doesn't interfere with all the other things that happen at the common. Um, so the approval of this would simply be giving us the ability to work within those dates to schedule the, the dates that we use with the common. And, um, yeah, that's all that would be for that.
Doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna have concerts, that many concerts.
I just have a really tough time with having to schedule so many Thursday dates because the broken down and the old don't want to go with the grandkids. And I mean, that's what keeps us young anyhow, and unbreaks us, is being around them kids, even though you want to smack them on a regular basis. So, I mean, if you're gonna, you know, I mean, even if you do them as opening acts, or, I mean, if you're gonna look at cutting, I guess what I'm suggesting, if you're gonna look at cutting dates, cut Thursdays. I'm sorry, you know, everybody thinks the locals need something different than the, the transients, but I don't look at it that way. I mean, we need their money, they need us, it's kind of like, and I'm gonna compare it to the Legion, the Sons of Legion do all the work over at Legion, indling. But they can't operate without the building, and there's no building without Legion members.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, we're, you're not here if we're not here.
Yeah, and I think you're giving us a good example of that, of why Thursdays are important. Um, the McCoy Creek Taverns of the world, the, um, the frankly, Thistle Down Rose of the world.
Right.
Um, the people that are, that make up that two-third donor base, um, want those people in, in downtown on Thursdays, they, they see this as an opportunity. Um, McCoy Creek's a great example, you know, during COVID, when we first started doing this, this larger fundraising effort, they were excited that we came and talked to them because they wanted to make sure that they were closed during that time, so they didn't have to staff that many people and figure it out. Now they're a donor and they share all of our stuff and they're integral parts of what we do, um, and run Thursday specials for the Thursday shows. You know, again, we, we tried actually cutting some of the Thursday shows and efforts to create, create more dollars for some of these bigger Saturday shows, and it was widely by the community disliked, they wanted more Thursday shows, they liked the Saturday shows. But, um, you know, frankly, the same way, I'm not gonna bring my grandpa to see Keller Williams, um, you know, there's three thousand people there, it's a huge thing. Um, and I think those people who are individually donors, their businesses are donors, um, I think that they spoke loud and clear that that's very important to them. And, um, I, I actually kind of, I mean, it would make my job easier to have less Thursday shows, and I, and I put a lot of energy into the Saturday shows myself. And as a donor to the series myself, I, I, I can appreciate what you're saying, um, but I also can appreciate that, um, that's not, from my understanding of everything with our community outreach, that is, uh, not the prevailing opinion of Buchanan. Buchanan wants their tax dollars to go to Thursday shows, which is what the, this commission's dollars go to.
Thank you very much.
I think if you, and I think if you go to one of those Thursday shows, that you're gonna find, there's a lot more conversation going on here than there is, you know, uh, watching a lot of what's going on, because it's locals getting down there and, you know, talking, shooting the breeze.
Yeah. And some of those end up being bigger shows too, you know, I mean, we've had, you know, I mean, every year we have two to three of those shows, end up having, you know, five hundred people at them. Um, but, you know, for, a lot of it is people just expect those to be down there on Thursdays. And that's something that our city as a community development thing is missing, that you can just come downtown and know stuff's going on. But in summertime, you know, on Thursdays, there's stuff going on downtown, you might not even end up making it to the concert, you might not leave McCoy's. But, um, that, that doesn't mean that that's not part of the full circle of vibrancy on, on, on Thursday nights in Buchanan, so.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a motion in support on the floor, can I take a roll call, please?
Swam?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Biansky?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mark, I'd like to motion to approve the ten thousand dollar annual expense we planned for.
No, that wasn't part of this plan, we weren't gonna do any of this budgeting, no way, no way, shape, or form. No, absolutely not.
He made a motion.
Made a motion.
Do I have support? Make a motion that we support the ten thousand dollar donation?
Whedon supports.
Yes.
Uh, discussion. This is a planned expense every year.
He's got a motion on the floor, point of order, Your Honor.
It's discussion.
It's discussion.
Discussion after the second.
Whedon was the second.
You seconded it?
Yeah.
Mark seconded the motion.
This is a planned expense we can go through every single year, every year that you were on this commission in the past, all the way up till now.
It always usually went through the DDA.
It's not a surprise.
And we're bragging about getting, you know, I mean, I'm sorry.
It's not like it's coming out of left field.
No, and this was sneaky, sneaky, sneaky garbage, you said it, you said it at the last meeting, you did the exact same thing at the last meeting, so, you know.
So if we set the precedence in years past, how is this sneaky, Dan?
No, 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 you didn't set no precedence, you said you weren't gonna make a motion for any money. You said you were not gonna do that this meeting, you were not gonna do that this meeting, you said the only thing he was asking for was for his dates. That's a quote, is that not a quote?
I don't recall, sorry.
That was the last, that was a separate motion.
But he also has authority to make a motion, Dan, I don't know.
Doesn't really matter, I'll vote no.
That's fine, I mean, we plan for this expense every single year, it's not as new, it's not a surprise, we have our budget session, we know this is coming.
You're gonna make a motion for the other three then, now?
No, I'm only talking about the concert series, the other stuff is brand new that I've never seen before.
Well, you said you weren't gonna do this motion for this concert series either.
No, I did not say that.
You know, and I mean, we all, we said that we were gonna do the dates and the dates only.
And I didn't say, I just said that was my last motion was the date.
That's what we sat up here and said, we were not gonna have a motion on any of the money, we were gonna discuss the money, we were trying to get educated on the money, and then you say that we're spending too much time on it, then you make a motion to pass the money. I mean, you have your motion, you have your second, call it out.
Just for clarification, my motion before was for the dates, I'm making a separate motion for the money.
Well, the dates have already been established.
Yeah, dates have been established, I'm, my second motion was to continue our annual commitment, and that's all.
Good, roll call, please.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Biansky?
No.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to new business budget amendments, uh, consider the budget amendments for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, before us tonight, we have, uh, budget amendment number one, we've made a conscientious effort to stay ahead of and top of our na- our financials and reporting. And here's the first round of amendments in that process. Through this amendment process, the financial records will be current as possible when you review our revenue and expense reports. And with this budget amendment number one, I would recommend approval of it.
Move to approve fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget amendment number one as presented.
Very good, do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you, discussion? Roll call, please.
Whedon?
Yes.
Biansky?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, all right, at this time, expenditures, consider approving expenditures of December ninth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of fifty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Um, there was several that I brought up, and I talked them over with Tim, the Michigan sign we've been paying for, for several years, for some unknown reason, at a thousand eighty dollars a year. We're gonna stop that, I believe.
What's that? What sign is that, Dan?
It's some placemaker signs when you come into town, and there's a contract that was signed on that, and we passed the, uh, cancel date. And so.
Those are the blue pure Michigan signs?
There you go.
Oh, like coming into the, the state of Michigan?
We need those.
Why do we need them?
Because they're the hallmark of tourism.
Cough up a thousand bucks then. Dumpster liners, that was discussed.
We need to go for those, we have max, we have as many as we can.
The dumpster liners are for the wastewater treatment plant, the bio solids that we haul out to the landfill. And they slide out a whole lot better when you got a dumpster liner in there than when you just take the material out there and have it fixing the dumpster after you dump it. So that's the purpose of those.
Can we go back to the Michigan logos?
They're about twenty bucks a piece.
Yeah, did you authorize them?
We've had these for twenty years.
So what is the big deal about not wanting to pay a thousand bucks?
They're on the interstate system, and they're the blue pure Michigan, which is the gold standard for, um, tourism in the state of Michigan, which is pure Michigan, arguably the best tourism brand on the planet.
But that's all that's on it, right? Or is the city Buchanan?
No, it says all, there's four, it says, uh, historic district, it has Lehman's, uh, Orchard and Brewery, it has Fernwood, it has all the attractions on Route twelve, at our Route twelve and Red Bud, uh, trail corner.
And don't those.
If, if this is what we're, I, I believe this is what we're talking about, the blue pure Michigan signs, there's a yearly annual rental fee that we've paid since they were, they, we have had them up.
I think those businesses have to contribute to have their stuff on, I think, too.
They may.
See, nobody knows, and I mean, it's a thousand bucks that we shouldn't be spending.
Worth following up on.
I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, we need those. We got them, we've maxed out, we wish we had more, but the state puts caps on them. So, um, we don't want to, for a thousand bucks, uh, it's like best thousand bucks we could spend.
Does that somehow give you incorporation into their potential advertising of our community, is it like in a, in a, in a roundabout way, or is it?
It's, it's more, it's roadside visibility, with that, again, the gold standard, the blue, the royal blue pure Michigan signs that everyone recognizes.
Yeah, and I completely understand, I mean, as somebody who's driven from coast to coast, here just recently, and as a driver, he's well aware of the number of signs that are out on the road. And as you can become consistently aware of what a marketing opportunity, certain states start to incorporate, I mean, let's, let's talk about the Gulf Coast of Florida and Georgia, right? And we talk about the Gold Coast, and we talk about, these are things, Dan, that may not be important to you, but I can guarantee that are extremely important to the marketing arm of every.
Have you ever sold Amway?
Uh, if I did, I would probably be a lot wealthier, I can tell you that, because, I can tell you this, because they are building, and it's funny you say that, Amway is building, uh, 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 stadium in Grand Rapids, so, I can tell you this, it, Amway's very rich, so are many other companies, it would be happy to explain to you why marketing is one of the most important things, especially in social media, the impact it has, just because we can't show you significant pull-through sales within your questioning tonight, doesn't mean the impact is not necessitating the requirement of this sign. I can't believe that you can't see that marketing is one of the greatest assets we have.
It depends on how you're marketing them too.
Social media has such an impact and such a stronghold on the world that we live in today, if you're not paying attention to it, then you're gonna be left behind.
This is just the state of Michigan Ponzi scheme.
It's not just the state of Michigan, there's.
Anyhow.
I'm sure you had another.
Their whole Palladium, we paid five hundred and forty-seven dollars for, I mean, we.
That was a public, public notice for our children.
So, you know, we talked about it, there's other cheaper places, but they don't all do what you tell them, they don't go through you, so, I mean.
No, this one went through me, there, there were deadlines, we had to.
Okay, okay, and then the only other one is the Baylor, forty-three hundred dollars, we spent to fix it, um, in December. And, I mean, it kind of goes back to fixing the equipment after the season, not during the season, and I think it's a lot of money to be spending on, I mean, I was all for the Baylor because I thought it was gonna work quite well.
It does, when it, when it works.
We're gonna just basically disagree on that.
No, it absolutely does.
I mean, it's kind of like the logo signs, let's, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
But the Baylor, I mean, we really need to look at, I mean, we don't even have a tractor to pull it. So, we need to look at, make sure that the equipment's up and working when we start the season, and maybe look at how real efficient it actually is. Because, I mean, there's some things that we're talking about doing with leaves, but I just wanted to bring it up because I go through these checks, and I just, it struck me as a lot of money, you know?
If we're not utilizing the equipment, is what you're saying, I don't disagree with you on that.
And I'm being very F' employed.
You are, you're doing extremely well, Dan, and I don't disagree with you, that is an expense that has been questionable for years, and I know Mike has an extensive amount of communication that he could, without a doubt, bestow upon us of whether or not the utilization of the Baylor is far more significant than the forty-three hundred dollars. Unfortunately, the forty-three hundred dollars is not gonna net us the utilization of that equipment, it's going to take us purchasing a new piece of equipment. Because, as Mike will attest, every city that has Balers in multiples at that saves significant amount of money if they were to purchase new ones. So I don't disagree that the forty-three hundred dollars, I am curious as to what that was utilized for in a piece of equipment we don't use. But I would also be interested in finding out what it would take to purchase new one, because the amount of man-hours it took to accomplish the leaves this season with, what? Two front-end loaders, that left, uh, not a pretty scene, right? Comparative to what we could have done with the Baylor are far more impactful, so I am not disagreeing with you, I am curious of what that forty-three hundred dollars was as well. So, then to Dan's point, are we just gonna stop spending money on it, so that, because if we're, if it's not, what's it gonna take to continue to fix it?
I have everything minus some pins and things that we may need when we put it back together.
Right.
The rollers back in it, and everything to put it back together right.
Outstanding, so next season, we should anticipate the Baylor, barring any other complications with it, back and functional. And please explain to the public exactly how. And please explain to the public exactly how efficient that is, what the utilization of it is. And just in a very short, snippet, what time does that save us?
In one bale, there is six unpacked truckloads of leaves that leave in a leaf bale.
And you can put.
Six truckloads, six dump truckloads, huge dump truckloads.
And you can get that in one?
One bale.
In the back of a truck?
We put eight bales in the back of a truck.
Ooh.
So, you can talk fuel, you can talk man-hours, you can talk whatever you want. That's efficient.
Thank you. That's exactly why we did it.
Simplest way to do it.
And if the tractor is a limiting factor, then we'll figure that out as well. And I think we have a solution for that. Dan, you have any more thing on expenses?
Um, Mr. Hickock installed something on Polis Road, thirty-two hundred dollars.
That's when you tear into a water line. You gotta replace it from point A to point B.
Okay, and we had to hire a contractor to do that, though.
Is that one of the lead ones?
Working on that going forward.
Okay. All right.
I hear you on that.
All right. That's one that I didn't hit you up on. It's just.
The state law.
Right, 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 right. I mean, I just, for general purposes for everybody, I go through this budget. It used to be in the consent calendar. And I had to move it off the consent calendar if I wanted to question any checks. That's why it got moved off separate. And I wanna thank the mayor and to leave it separate. Because it does answer a lot of questions.
Yeah.
And I don't just personally want them answered.
No, you're doing it for the public and I appreciate that.
You know, so I will make the motion to approve the expenditures in the amount of fifty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Thank you. Do we have support?
Money, I'll support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Biansky.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swin.
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And Weeden.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, communications, moving on. Uh, December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four meeting cancellation. The regular meeting was canceled for December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. The next city commission regular meeting will be on January thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, next topic, compensation. Commission calling for applicants. The city commission is calling for applicants for the municipal officers' compensation commission. Uh, if you recall, there is actually, uh, Ruth is in here in the, in the room. Uh, this falls under an ordinance that only occurs in certain years and the one upcoming is two thousand twenty-five. Uh, the commission will meet in January and determine the salary each elected municipal official and presented by the second meeting in February. Five members will be appointed. Each of whom shall be registered elector of the city of Buchanan. A member or employee of the legislative judicial, judicial or executive branch of government or a member of immediate family, of a member or employee of a legislative judicial or executive branch of government shall not be a member of the commission. Uh, applicants should be turned in by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four to the city clerk.
We need five.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, is there any, you know, any other detail?
You guys are.
We are. We have a final approval on that.
We need five, at, at least five applicants. Um, they have to be registered to vote in the city. They can't be related to you or to an employee. So Peter's out of here. He can't do it.
Do ex-wives count?
No. Forgive me for, and this may not be protocol. Ms. Rider, do you mind, you, you had sat on the previous board, is that correct, of electors that determine the?
I think it was Diane Ross.
Was it Diane Ross? I, my, my apologies.
Well, I haven't lived in the city for forty-eight years.
Okay, well then I apologize for misrepresenting that. For some reason, I thought you had showed up at the same time as Mr. Herman.
Get appointed on the board, unfortunately.
So unfortunately, you can't. So I apologize.
Yeah, so anybody that's um, interested in applying, please, the application, it's actually listed on our website under um, news and announcements. It's the first one you'll see, actually. It's just our normal uh, volunteer application. What we'll do is it does have to be appointed by you guys. So hopefully, the first meeting in January, you will have five applicants. You can appoint. Um, and then I will work with them because it does have to follow Open Meetings Act. So I will work with them on scheduling their meetings and being present at their meetings. And then hopefully, um, either the first February or second February meeting, they will come and tell you what they recommend. For compensation.
So, why are we in a hurry to do this? I mean, I.
Oh, it's big, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go, no, here, it's by our ordinance. So there is actual ordinance where you have to do it on this timeline. It's supposed to be by the second meeting in February.
So it's something that the.
But usually it just gets ignored and nobody, so since we had some interest, we showed some interest in it, right?
Correct.
I did a salary study for you guys.
Yeah.
Um, just out of curiosity of where everybody is, and it's very interesting if you look at our neighboring jurisdictions. Um, it's either where you guys are or even lower to way up here. Um.
Bertrand has lots of money, so they pay extortionate.
Yeah, and, and the reason she came across this is because it was the ordinance. If they had never created the ordinance, I think that we could have like floated through this in a much easier process.
My stand has always been we're volunteers.
Right, right.
I mean, I'm not gonna necessarily vote against the raise, but on the other hand, we are volunteers.
Yep.
And the more money we give us, it doesn't mean we're gonna be any less nasty or nice.
Well, we can only hope for the latter.
Yeah, money's not gonna make me happy.
Very good.
The secret sauce.
I don't know. What's the secret sauce?
No, we don't have that much time to debate.
Have that much time. Okay, moving on. Uh, at this time, we will take public comments for non-agenda items. Please keep your comments to three minutes and approach the podium. State your name for the record.
Jim Cronin, three oh two Lake Street. I've lived on the corner of Third and Lake for fifty years. And here fifteen years ago or so, the city tore up Third Street, replaced sewer lines. And uh, once they were finished with the paving the road and everything, somebody, I didn't know the, the city, I can't remember, or somebody else planted trees along Third Street. Well, after fifteen years of growth, uh, the maple tree they planted on my tree lawn, has got in my root system. My question is, if the city knows where the sewer line dumps into the sewer, why would they plant a tree that close to the sewer line? Because it costs me a hundred and fifty, two hundred bucks every time I gotta get that cleaned out. And if the city wants to pay for that, I don't have no trouble.
Oh, no. They won't.
But it's just negligence on whoever it is who plants those trees. My neighbor across the street on Third Street, same thing. Tree roots in his sewer line.
And I think it, if, and I, and I know this is not customary, but I, and I don't disagree with you in that fact, that I think that's the importance of the group.
I just wanna make it preventative.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mistake again.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's the significance of that.
Enough, it's too late for me.
Right.
I just wanna dig my own sewer line up.
Is it, what I, eh, to have the tree friends within our preview is something that is significantly important to that rationale because if, potentially, that may not have happened. In, in the, if, if somebody like the tree friends were available at the time of that planting. I can't speak for that previous commission. Thank you.
I was not involved when they planted the trees on Third Street. I wasn't even working here, I don't think, but.
You may not have been born.
Now we have mist dig. Back then, I don't think mist dig was such a thing.
Right.
So now we have mist dig. And when I go and I see the mist dig marks, Richard Martin, I have to have a real serious conversation because he's like, well, but it's real pretty right here. But there's a sewer line and a water line real close to there.
Yeah, I think the due diligence, the due diligence of this community is far more impactful to that not happening than it would be.
Planted a bunch of new ones on Front Street.
Yeah, we did. And I think that there was probably involvement from Mike's team in the mist dig. No doubt about it.
Martin does, and we talk about every single one.
And they, and I'm certain that he could tell us what root system is and how deep they're gonna go and how they either go deep or they go out. It just all,
We go and we go.
That's not my expertise.
So it doesn't get affected by the power lines. So where they're planted, there is no power lines on that side of the road.
Yeah, that's.
That's one of the reasons why they bought that water tank too. Because if they water them trees, which they were never watered before, it sends the root system straight down rather than out.
Same, so spread out.
There you go. All right. Very good. Uh, executive comments.
Okay, uh, the, I'm gonna provide an update for the technical managerial and financial lead service line replacement grant. Oh, the city will be mailing out letters in the next week to encourage water customers to make appointments, to have the city visually verify their water service line materials inside the home. The letters will be going out. Appointments will be available from January sixth through February twenty-eighth initially. In their fifteen minutes appointment, we seek access to inside the homes, verify the materials. It all goes into our database. And it all gets consolidated into this lead service line replacement program. The McCoy Creek Culvert project, uh, the contracts have been signed. We have a pre-construction meeting onsite on Wednesday. Mike and myself will be attending. We'll talk schedule with the contractor and try to figure out how we can minimize the impact on the local community in that area. The Front Street retaining wall rebid, uh, the bids are due January ninth. The completion date is June thirtieth. We've made those accommodations to try to attract more qualified contractors. We've identified approximately fourteen potential qualified contractors to bid the project.
They have, you have gotten fourteen?
No, we've identified fourteen.
I was like, dude, that would be a record.
But we've made the conditions a little more palatable, so hopefully we'll attract some bidders.
You were almost gonna make my day.
Well, I would like to make you a review page forty-six in your audit where the general fund budgetary comparison is. And the numbers behind that will show our increased fund balance went from one point two million to one point eight seven six million.
That's good.
Thank you. So if you're gonna read any page in that whole book, read that.
Read that one. Dan's gonna have to come up with a new slogan now.
Yeah, exactly.
That's all I have.
Outstanding. Thank you, Tim. Uh, Mr. Biansky.
Well, since we're studying numbers, and this is gonna be technically the last time, I mean, we canceled the meeting, so we don't have a contract. I don't know if this will be the last time we'll technically see you as a city manager, Tim, but I wanna thank you very much sincerely. Um, the city doesn't realize how bad this was. They have no idea. And a lot of this was because of the good old boy system and friends. That's why I'm so nasty about it. You know, ignore anything that anybody's doing and you're getting screwed in the meantime. I mean, this budget was an absolute nightmare for years. But thank you very much, Tim. I also wanted to, um, there was something else, but I guess it's not important at all. The code enforcement. We've had pretty serious conversations about the code enforcement. I'm looking forward next year to getting serious, about code enforcement. I think it's a revenue source. I think there's lots of new people in town that don't understand. I would like to see the city start posting updates. Mike, when you posted that update, thank you very much for the leary.
Yep.
Need to do more of that when you see it around garbage that's going out, or you know, whoever does it.
On Facebook. I just make the recommendation that we can post on Facebook.
Make the recommendations, cause it was a good recommendation, you know, and do that when you start your brush pickup. It's great, cause people do follow Facebook. And the ones that don't follow Facebook, do this. Okay, so thank you very much. I, I think we need to put it on Facebook for our infamous raise of fifty bucks a month, or whatever it is we get. Um, so that we can get five candidates, cause I don't think they're gonna come out of the woodwork.
I will put, I just put it on the website today. I wanted to make.
I mean, I've got five volunteers, but they're all related and that probably wouldn't work.
We'll do a call for applicants, okay? I'll put it on Facebook tomorrow.
But I, I mean, Tim, I can't say thank you enough. I mean, through all of the, through everything that we've gone through down here, and the enemies that I've created, and I don't really care because I had.
Actually have fans now.
Well, and I, I, I got, I got a stronger base, but I had to stand up for what I thought was right. And it was very difficult for all of us. It was very difficult for all of us.
Agreed, yeah.
Um, but it's kinda cleaned up and I think going forward, we're gonna have a good city manager and Tim's gonna hang around to help for a while. But I just really wanted to make sure I got an extended thank you to Tim Lynch. Thank you very much, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Dan. Mr. Money?
Uh, yeah. Uh, just wanna say thank you to the chamber for the great city Christmas party that they threw, you know, it was a, uh, great affair. It wasn't uh, as popular, I don't think, as it, as it has been in the past, but the weather had a lot to do with that. So, um, you know, but they need to be thanked for what they did. Uh, I know they had the shop with the cop program this weekend and I know that it went off very well as it always does. Uh, I wanna thank uh, Brian. He, he left from the uh, uh, Kugel and Lawton uh, firm for that great audit. Um, I, and I just kinda marked this in my, in the book, you know, cause Tim made this and I just kinda like reiterate, uh, that the city hall management and finance personnel have invested significant, significant time and effort to enhance, and strengthen business procedures and reporting functions in the areas, cash handling, investments and segregation of duties. That's great. Uh, I think the city, uh, city folks ought to know that, that what's going on down here. Um, thanks to Stephanie and Ruth for showing up for the One Buchanan appreciate, uh, uh, explanation. Uh, same thing with Michael. Uh, I do wanna make a public service announcement here on December fourteenth, which is this coming Saturday. Uh, they may, may mention of it before that uh, the Veteran Circle at Oak Ridge Cemetery has been designated as a Rees Across America uh, project. Uh, the Rees will be coming in tomorrow sometime. Uh, Mike is gonna help, help us store those. We will, excuse me, we will have a formal ceremony there um, on the fourteenth. Uh, it's gonna be at twelve thirty. Uh, then right after that uh, program, uh, we will be putting the Rees on the graves at, at the Veteran Circle. Uh, wanna extend, you know, an invitation to uh, all of Buchanan. We're trying to put together, you know, um, some publicity for this and uh, the, uh, I know the mayor's said he was gonna be there to add a little something. I coerced him at a Legion meeting, so. Uh, so yeah, uh, this is a first-time event for us and, and uh, and it's uh, come to fruition, so. Hope everybody has a Merry Christmas. Gotta reiterate Dan's comment on Tim. Tim, thanks a lot. We couldn't have uh, got this far and done this well without your assistance.
It's been my pleasure.
Thank you, Tim.
Everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Money. Ms. George?
Yes, um, I just wanted to say thank you for uh, coming out and talking to us, both of the One Buchanan and Michael Rowland. Also, wanted to say that the Buchanan light up went really well and I appreciate all the chambers' hard work. I know that, um, there were different situations that they had to work through with that and I just appreciate their hard work every year. Um, also, like going with Mr. Money, um, the shop with the cop, I just love seeing those Facebook posts. It always touches my heart. So I appreciate the cops in our town, um, and everything that they give uh, to the less fortunate or, you know, just to make our community look really well. Um, also, I wanted to thank Tim. I um, really have the pleasure of working with you and, I appreciate everything that you've poured into this community even before I was here. Um, it just shows uh, how much you care and, I really appreciate that and I hope that you stick around for a while. Um, also, um, just wanted to say Merry Christmas to everybody and hope you guys have a great holiday. Stay safe.
Thank you. Mr. Swin?
Yeah, big congratulations to the finance team. Um, two consecutive years of an improved audit. Uh, this, I mean, it's an understatement how much work they put in. You know, you see the line item like forty-seven, or sorry, forty-five point four percent in general government expenses decrease. You hear people talk, we heard it tonight about trimming fat. You know, that, there's a, there's a lot of work that went into forty-five percent decrease, so I have to imagine we're running very efficient. Not that there's more, not always room for improvement, but the work that's been done, the sacrifices that the teams have made, um, that allows us to do a lot more um, going forward. When we wanna make big investments. Things like that allow, that belt tightening allows us to do more on these bigger items in the future or capital planning, et cetera. So great work, everybody that went into, a stellar audit. It's, it's a badge of honor. You should all be proud of the work across all departments to, to achieve what you achieved in this, so thank you. Um, Merry Christmas to all. Happy New Year. Tim, I know, we'll see you soon.
I was trying to fly under the radar tonight.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna happen.
I thought we were gonna have a thirty-minute meeting, so.
Well, we tried. Uh, first and foremost, I want, uh, I wanna thank Dan. I think that, you know, the, the narrative that you give to everybody here and, and the, the pause you give everybody and the, the, the reason that you uh, are on the commission and it may not be, very, people may not be conscious of it at first and, and you, you force everybody to think and I appreciate that. I may not always agree with what you say or how you say it, but I do appreciate what you give to this commission. Uh, it's definitely colorful, to say the least. Uh, I can't, I, I, I'll just reiterate everything else everybody said. I think everybody in this town is excited about where we're going. Uh, I know Mr. Murphy is. I know that he catches a lot of heat from, from Dan, uh, but it makes him work hard. It makes him more passionate about what we do in this community and the reason that we're gonna be stronger. I know that he catches a lot of heat from, from Dan, uh, but it makes him work hard. It makes him more passionate about what we do in this community, and the reason that we're gonna be stronger before it. Uh, Tim, there's no words. There's no words. Like, you, you have literally given a breath of fresh air to this city that cannot be paid back. You have proven that we are not broke, that we are not destitute, that, that, that life is better here. I believe that the commission that sits before you as a public today is going to give you exactly what you've always asked for, and I promise you that we will be fiscally conservative, as I've always said. Uh, and I'm proud to be your mayor. I'm proud to sit up here and, and watch this team grow, and be proud of what they do for this city, because I have to see these people every day out on the streets. Uh, we are not hiding behind desks. We are not hiding behind the title. Uh, we live here, too, and we wanna make sure that our kids are happy and safe. Uh, and that our streets and our water and our sewers are working. So thank you for everybody who shows up and gives effort to everything you do, so, uh, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll still move.
Do we have a second?
Money, I'll support.
Yo.
Go ahead.
Ms. George will take it. Roll call, please.
Money?
Yes.
Swin?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
And Bianski?
Yes.
You're adjourned.
Thank you.
So, we might have to discuss one more this meeting.
I'm, I'm thinking it's Friday.
So, I mean, we really, it's a formality, as long as a contract. There's nothing in the contract that's gonna.